All right, it looks like we are ready to rock and roll. Thank you all for being here. We had some technical issues to take care of, but it looks like we are ready. Oh, we're going to start our meeting by doing this. It's too loud. Okay. Again, welcome, everyone. We are glad to see you here. We're going to turn the time over to Councilman Garrity for the opening of our meeting.
Yeah, so I wanted to share a little bit of Cache County history. So March is Women's History Month, and Saturday was International Women's Day. And I don't know a lot about the history of women in government in Cache County, so I decided to do a little research. I found a website called utawawomen'shistory.org. I don't know if anyone's heard of that, but it was a good resource for me to learn more about it. And I wanted to share a story that I would say was equal parts educational, amusing, and inspiring. So I'm just going to read from the website. It's a few paragraphs on the highlight an individual in their history. It said, "Bessie Moorhead was born in 1867 in Smithfield, Utah. She was very talented, and by 1891, she was a member and featured soloist of the Logan Opera Company, where she was billed as one of Utah's best and favorite vocalists. Bessie performed in many special events and theater productions. She also taught elementary school and became an expert kindergarten, expert in kindergarten education, completing a course in teaching kindergarten in Salt Lake. Her political life began with an angry confrontation in 1896 during the nominations for county offices. She was nominated with much fervor over the current county recorder, Charles Hyde, who wanted to continue his job." This is from the Logan Journal. It said, "Bessie Moorhead knocked Charlie Hyde out of, in the Democratic Convention, but Charlie has unsheathed his knife and started after Ms. Moorhead's scalp. Women had better look out for chivalrous Charlie; he will have his revenge." Charlie Hyde switched parties and ran against Bessie. Not only that, opposition came from her own LDS stake president, who implied that she wasn't as good a saint as Charles Hyde was. The editor of the Logan Journal was aghast and defended her reputation. It appears the political rhetoric was alive and well in early Utah. Still, Bessie won by 1,300 votes and went on to serve two terms." And then after Utah statehood, Cache County women consistently won election to the office of county recorder. Jenny P. Slater was elected recorder in 1900. Rebecca Ames was elected in 1902, in 1904. They were followed by Sarah Merrill in 1906, Lenny Telford in 1908, Kate Preston in 1912, in 1914, Louisa Barber in 1916, Laura R. Merrill in 1920. So continuing that tradition, our very own Tenille Johnson is currently serving as the recorder. I think she's held that since 2023. But I thought that was a fascinating bit of history, and I learned about some of our officials who came before us that I didn't know before. So if you will all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Keegan. That was interesting. I need to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with the following amendment, that we move item 10A, the inter-local discussion, agreements discussion. We're going to move that up to become item 6B as an item of special interest. And then we will actually, I'm going to include in that, we're going to strike item 9F, the resolution to adopt the county, the Cache County Fiscal Year 2026 budget calendar. We're not quite ready to move on that. We have some further review that needs to be done on that, to strike that from the agenda tonight.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on those two amendments to our agenda? Okay, it's been moved in second. And those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, how about a motion to approve the minutes from the February 25th meeting?
I just had a one point to clarify or to maybe amend, but it's down in the section 10B. It's in my remarks based on that section. Let me find it on this format here. Yeah, so after one hour and 21 minutes and 41 seconds in, Councilmember Mark Heard shares his concerns with the, two lines down says, that I stated I would prefer an elected executive rather than an appointed manager, and was opposed to turning over some authority to an unelected official, where what the minute states is an elected official. So it's contrary, and it is not, does not match what I said. So we just change that, an elected to an unelected, then it will match.
Perfect. Okay, do you want to, with that amendment, do you want to make a motion?
So, yeah, so I propose that we make a motion that we adopt the minutes as amended.
Okay. Moved in seconded, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, the report from the county executive, Dirk.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Counsel. I have for your consideration tonight a proposal for an appointment to the Cache Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees, the member that would represent the unincorporated area, that being Jeff Ricks of Benson, Utah.
Okay. Does anybody have, want to discuss that? Do we want to make a motion?
Is he here?
Jeff here?
He was not able to make it tonight.
Okay.
Has he been on before?
That is a good question. It would be reappointed, yes.
This is a reappointment?
Yeah, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, Dirk. Is there anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, 6A, the Raps Tax Reallocation, Michelle Jensen. Please, no, up here. And introduce yourself for the record.
I certainly will. Michelle Jensen, City Treasurer for River Heights City. Normally Chris Milbank would be doing this, but he is out, so we're, Blake Garsidy, or the mayor is here also, so we're just kind of stepping in for him. But Chris applied for Raps Tax last year and had asked for a pavilion at the Stewart Hill Park. We are asking if you would reallocate our Raps Tax allocation that was awarded to us for, it's the same project, but a different location. So what, is it Ryan's Park, City Square Park? Heber Olson Park. So same project, it's a pavilion, concrete, some landscaping around it. We had a pavilion there, and it was falling down. It was becoming a hazard for our city. So we had to pivot and remove that and replace it. So we are just asking for the relocation of that, to that project.
Okay, are the, yeah, go ahead.
Are you referring to the one that's kind of like behind where the, so I guess just west?
By Ryan's Place Park.
Of Ryan's Place Park?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is kind of an older park. So would the funds be going towards the demolition of that pavilion? Or have you already demolished that pavilion?
It's demolished, and a new pavilion is up. We've spent 70, about 72,000 right now, but we don't have any concrete, or we need to do some sprinkling system and some sod and things. So we had actually applied for a pavilion, concrete, all those things, but we were going to put it at Stewart Hill Park. So we're just basically moving it. And then we did reapply for just last week for the Stewart Hill Park pavilion.
What was the original award?
120,000.
120,000? Okay, so you still have more, you think you can do it within that?
Yeah, yep. We will be able to get everything we need.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, does anybody else have any questions for Michelle?
Same, kind of same type of project, same purpose, just a different park, right?
Pretty much the exact same thing. Yep. Yeah.
So will any of the funds go to reimburse some of the work you've already done?
Yeah, so we will take, so we spent 72,000. We did that in August and November, we spent a little bit. So we would like to apply that toward that and then finish the concrete, the sprinkling, and the sod at that pavilion, and then we've reapplied for the other one, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? I would entertain a mo, do we have a motion on that? Okay, I'd entertain a motion for that.
I haven't done this before, is that unusual? I don't know. Maybe I can direct that to Alma? Is that something that's unusual? I mean, not that I don't know if I have a problem with it, but I just don't know if that...
A request to move to a different project is probably a new request. It's usually an extension, because some work has not been able to be done. But we wanted to bring it forth to the council, just so you were aware, because they had applied for a pavilion in one park, and they needed to replace another one, and they're wondering if they can move those funds to replace that one. And then they did submit another application for the other ones. So it's kind of a rare request, but we wanted to put it forth to you to get approval or not.
Thanks, Alma.
I guess my, the way you've described it is that this other pavilion was already in the process and was going up, and now you want reimbursement for that one?
Well, so what happened? We had applied for the Stewart Hill Park pavilion. In the meantime, our current pavilion that we're asking to move the funds to, we had a pavilion there, it was falling down. It was, it was becoming a hazard for our community. Kids were climbing on beams that were going to fall over and things, so we had to take it down.
And then you started building it?
So then we replaced it. We put a, we put a new pavilion up.
You were using city funds for that, still hoping to do the other pavilion?
Well, River Heights City is very small, so 72,000 takes a hit for us. So we, we had to, well, we, we kind of pivoted because that pavilion was falling down. So we put a new one up, but we would like to do both, but we can't do both without the Raps Tax.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
Why move that we go ahead and approve this, almost a relocation?
Yeah, it's...
Not necessarily reallocation, it's a relocation of the funds to same purpose, different park.
Yes.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded, is there any discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, item B, the reason we wanted to talk about this a little bit earlier is because Dirk might have to leave, and we thought that Jarris might have to leave a few years, so. Just to bring everyone up to speed, a few weeks ago, we unanimously approved the interlocal agreements between Bear River Mental Health, or not Bear, it's Bear River Health Department and the Bear River Association of Governments. There were two of them. And there has been some differences of opinions that those, those interlocal agreements had not been signed because of some of the things that the executive felt like needed to be changed and that. And he and I had a discussion today, those, both of those agreements are signed, they're taken care of today. But I did give the executive my word that we would discuss, that the reason we needed to get them signed today is so that Bear River Health Department could move forward. They have, they're trying to hire somebody, and they also need to do their state contracts. So they need that signed so that they can move on. But the sticking point for the executive was the appointing authority. And one of the changes in this interlocal agreement was that the council became the appointing authority. And so what, in speaking with our attorneys, I had a conversation with Jordan Mathis and with the executive, what I would like to propose to the council, we'll get this signed and move forward so they can get going. Because if we made any changes to it, it has to go back to the other two counties, which would take a, make a delay. They wouldn't be able to do the things they need to do. So the change that I proposed was that we, that we say in the agreement, there are three elected officials on the Board of Health Department. There's one from Box Elder County, one from Rich County, and one from Cache County. I would like to designate in that interlocal agreement that the elected official from Cache County is always the council chair. It doesn't have to be reappointed. Whoever is serving as chair will also serve on the board of the Health Department. And the reasoning for that is, there's three things. First of all, we as a council are the mental health authority for Cache County. We are also the substance abuse authority for Cache County, and we are the keepers of the budget. We approve their budgets and their signatures. And so it makes sense for everyone involved that a member of the council should be on that board, and we haven't been in the past. So if we, if we designate that, that the council chair is always on the board, and the other, there's three other than at-large seats that our county is in charge of, we turn that appointing authority back to the executive with our advice and consent. And that was acceptable to Executive Zook. It's something that, if we make that change, then we have to go back to the other two counties to get their approval. I don't think they would care because it doesn't affect them. But I wanted to have that discussion with the council as a whole, what you think about that compromise. The agreement that we unanimously approved is signed. It's already been done today. So I don't know if anyone has an opinion or wants to share about that, so that we can give direction to our attorneys as far as, do we want to amend that agreement moving forward?
So can we do a quick recap of what it is and then what it's changing to?
In the, in the interlocal agreement, it just says that the council is the appointing authority.
And how many members on the board?
There is one elected official and three at-large from Cache County. There's also an elected official from each of Box Elder and Rich. Box Elder has two at-large members, Rich has one.
So is it seven total?
Nine, it's nine total.
Okay. So that basically goes from us appointing to one of us, the chair, automatically being on the board?
On the board.
And then the executive appointing the other three?
Yes. And I checked with Jarris today, as far as he could tell, the, of the three members that we have at-large on that board right now, one of them has a term that'll end at the end of this year. One has two years, and one is sort of 2027. So it's not anything that will happen immediately. That's why it gives us some time to see if we want to amend that.
Another question is, does that appointment need to be ratified by either the council or the board? Or is it unilateral?
The council, it's the advice and consent of the council, all appointments. So, and there's our illustrious, we just talked about our interlocal agreement, you missed it. It's okay. We're just trying to decide as a council whether we want to, the agreement is signed, moving, so you can move forward, you're good to go. We're just discussing whether we want to amend that as we move forward and make a few tweaks to it.
Personally, I'm satisfied with the agreement that we've made. I think we're fine, and I think that we, just we move on.
Anybody else want to speak to that? And you can talk to me personally later if you want to do that. I just wanted to make everyone aware of what was going on so that we're all on the same page. And I'm really grateful that we got those agreements signed today, both of them, so that we are legal to be the Bear River Association of Governments, and the Bear River Health Department can move forward with their contracts and their hiring.
I think that we have a say in ratifying. I'm fine with the change, I would support the change.
Okay, we've got one that says we should stay, one that wants to change. Does, does anyone else, does anyone else want to talk about it right now? Do you want to wait, and we can talk about it later? I'm open to any discussion.
I'll digest it a little bit more, if that's okay, and...
Yeah, this is all kind of new.
As I move it over and bring it up to you as the chair.
Okay, and we'll work with our attorneys and take care of that. Does that work for you, Taylor?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide any context if anybody wants any additional information. The agreements as signed currently are legal, according to state code. I know that the executive expressed some concerns that they were not in accordance with the Organic Act, but state code overrides the Organic Act, and state code says that the creation, operation, governance, fiscal procedures, and reach equality, that's governed by Utah Code 1113 and are not subject to any of the other statutes in the county or in other parts of the state code. So the agreements as signed currently are legal, and it's the county attorney's job to review agreements as to form and legality. Our office has had multiple attorneys look at this over a long period of time. The agreements as they currently are constituted are legal. And so if you do want to make changes, that's up to the council. But as far as any of those concerns of whether or not it's legal, those concerns don't necessarily apply in this case.
Thank you, Taylor, I appreciate that. Okay, I think we'll just leave it at that and let everyone kind of give some time to digest that, and we can decide what we want to do as a council. Okay.
We got a comment here.
Oh, yes, please come, yes, you are the center of this.
Jordan Mathis, Director of the Bear River Health Department. The one consideration in this whole thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Taylor, any change to the language as it is does have to go back through the other counties.
Right.
And I don't know that they're, they'll have issues with any changes, but we have the sign thing. We just need to make sure that they're comfortable with the language as well, because it is a...
Interlocal.
Yeah, it's an interlocal agreement, so.
Okay.
I just want that to be on the record.
For now, we can move forward with as signed, as is.
As it is.
We are ready to go.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jordan. All right, next on our agenda is Board of Equalization. Diana, does someone want to make a motion that we move into Board of Equalization?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we move into the Board of Equalization. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, turn the time over to Diana.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This evening, I bring 42 of the exclusive use exemptions for your consideration. We have six that are educational, 20 that are religious, and 16 charitable. Hopefully, we have them in order so we can find them together. If we want to start off with those educational ones.
Yep.
And then I can entertain any questions that you have, or you can make the motion if you're ready for that.
Anybody have any questions for Diana on those? Or anybody want to make a motion about the six educational ones? They are, if you look in your packet, they're all, they're together in a separate file.
And these are all actually...
Everything that's on, everything that is on your agenda tonight, all 42 are repeats, as Dave says.
You want to approve those as we go then, or all of them together?
Do you want to just do them by category? Should we do three different motions?
That is entirely up to the council, and we'll do it however you like.
That might be easier if we do it by category.
Move to approve those within the education folders. That's second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, those in favor of approving the education, the six educational exemptions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the religious, you have 20 in front of you. Again, all are repeats. The only one that is notable is that with the Cache Valley Bible Church, they do have, 11% is rented to Portal Medical. That's why you see the yellow highlighting, because those are partials.
What are the, what are the stipulations and the laws around that? Like, does that affect their exemption?
Then we, 11% is not exempted, and they pay on that. If it's rented, it's similar to a privilege tax. Like, if Utah State has Blue Square and they have restaurants and chocolate factories, they pay a tax.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Does anybody have any questions for Diana about any of those religious exemptions? Why is there, why is the one highlighted in red, Diana?
Because they have a really high turnover with management, so it's left red so that we know to get started on finding whomever is going to submit their paperwork each year. And the light blues are for personal property only, meaning they don't own the real, the land and the building, and they're renting somewhere, so they're just asking for exemption on their business property.
Okay.
I move to approve the religious exemptions as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the religious exemptions brought to us. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, the third one.
So, yes, moving on to our charitable, we have 16 of those. Again, all are repeats. The only notable is on somebody's attic. They have a location in Logan and one in Smithfield, and both of them have an apartment above. So the Logan one is 89.87% exempt, and the Smithfield, 82.95%.
Is that based on square footage?
Square footage, exactly right.
Move to approve the 16 charitables.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the 16 charitable exemptions. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Diana, thank you. I know that you carefully go through every one of these.
Yeah, if you'll get your signature and then pass them off to Bryson, the clerk needs to attest to that, and then Bryson can hand them back to...
I will try and get to that. Thank you, Diana, we appreciate you. Okay, hang on, I lost my agenda. Okay, the next, it's plus up to 5:30, we're going to start our public... Oh, yes, thank you.
Move that we exit the Board of Equalization? Second.
Been moved and seconded that we exit the Board of Equalization. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right, so public hearing number one, the ordinance 2025-08, Funk Richmond Gravel Pit Property Rezone. Angie.
Hello. Angie, is that a request interim director of Development Services? The first public hearing is a request to rezone 286, 287, we'll just round up, from the Ag Zone A10 to the industrial zone and apply the mineral extraction and overlay zone. So there was a public hearing held on February 6th in front of Planning Commission. The main issues are that with the industrial zone also being requested is that opens up to a lot more uses that could be allowed on there besides just mineral extraction, including general manufacturing, storage and warehousing, transport services, general vehicle repair. Access is from the highway and then onto a private drive, so there would be issues with air and water quality. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended denial, six to zero on that, based on the facts that the nearest industrial zone from this location in the county is about a mile and a half to the northwest, and then the nearest parcel with the mineral extraction overlay is about a, almost a mile to the south. The property is not consistent with the industrial or mineral extraction overlay zone. The industrial zone is to provide locations where manufacturing, processing, warehousing, and fabrication of goods and materials can be carried on with minimum conflict with the surrounding properties and to promote the economic well-being of the citizens and to broaden the tax base. And then the mineral extraction overlay is to establish locations and protect the commercial mineral extraction excavation industry while protecting the environment and county citizens. The rezone was also found not to be consistent with the Cache County General Plan as that future land use area is designated as agricultural and ranching. They have not met with UDOT yet to talk about access for the property. And an additional finding that was made during Planning Commission was the nature of Crow Mountain, where this is located, has significant natural heritage site. I believe in the discussion and discourse with Planning Commission, they probably would have been more favorable to just the mineral extraction overlay zone, but because it also requested the industrial across the full 287 acres, it was recommended for denial.
Thanks, Angie. Okay, it's, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this rezone? If you'd like to speak, come up to the microphone. Please identify yourself and...
My name's Larry Copeland. I own property adjoining that rezone area. There are several springs on that property that Utah State owns, the Spring Hill behind that property. Any heavy equipment moving around up there, I think not only noise and dust, but the vibration will alter the water flows. My property is fed by a well, and I am very concerned about that operation not going in. You might well consider that's, that's why I'm here. I don't, I don't fault him for wanting to sell his property at a higher rate. That doesn't bother me. The fact that it turned it into a gravel pit where there's several in the valley, one within a mile of it, and there's... within a mile of it, and there's also, from what I understood, I can't hear very well, but from what I understood, there were several that's been approved that have not opened yet in the valley. So I don't believe it would be in our best interest to even open another gravel pit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this rezone? Okay. Oh, thank you.
Gary Dent. We have property, we go through this property to access ours. Really don't have a problem with a gravel pit. We don't have water there. I understand why the people below do. But the industrial rezone part of that is, it doesn't fit with anything around or even close to that property, and so I would oppose that industrial rezone. But as far as the gravel pit goes, I'm sure that all the rightaways and different things would be maintained, and slopes off property lines, things like that. But, yeah, the industrial side of it, I just don't see how that really fits into that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have another one. Do we close the hearing? Close this. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular rezone?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved and seconded that we close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, let's move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-nine, the Willets RU five rezone. Angie?
Yes, so this is an ordinance requesting eighteen point seven-one acres be rezoned from the agricultural A-ten to the rural five. The public hearing was held with Planning Commission on February sixth. If this does sound kind of familiar, in August, there was a separate rezone request for the same property. That request was to go for the rural two zone, RU two, and that was unanimously recommended denial by both Planning Commission and County Council. So the applicant is now requesting RU five, which would allow a maximum potential of three lots on the property. That could be less, depending on sensitive areas, once we get to a net developable acreage. The RU five, again, the main thing is it would allow for that increased residential density. There was a question on this one, and one of the conclusions for a recommendation of denial about UDOT, and whether they had approved an access that's already been constructed there. And we did, the applicant did set up a meeting with UDOT. Staff was part of that. They did have approval from UDOT for that access off of there. You can see, kind of goes to an angle towards the northeast. And UDOT did say that that access would be good up to six to ten lots before they had to do another traffic impact study. However, the recommendations for denial from Planning Commission also include that the nearest area in the county that's an RU five is about a mile away, so this would set a precedent. And the rezone is not consistent with the Cache County General Plan, as it's located in agricultural ranching area. However, it is also located in a urban expansionary, but those are things that we look at, like twenty years into the future, not immediate. There were multiple comments opposed to the project, both written and during the Planning Commission public hearing. So again, the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously for denial, six to zero on that.
Thanks, Angie. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to this project? You raise your hand if you'd like to speak to this.
Can I just give you each one of these little packets papers?
Sure.
Jed Willets, I'm the one that has this project, and I emailed a few days ago, includes some of the things that are in this packet. The basic thing is, when I initially purchased this, it was nineteen point two-three acres, and in the county a couple of years ago. Little over a half-acre lots on the other side of the railroad tracks, so it was made its own little lot. It left this at eighteen point seven-one. So it's hard to be right below twenty lots, or twenty acres, because you're still just at one. Instead of, if I was just at twenty, I could just, you know, do a two-lot subdivision, or, you know, have the ability to do that. One of the things in the way up to RU two zone last August is Scott Wells from Wellsville City was here, and when he was up here at the pulpit, he mentioned that this RU two wasn't in line, but this first page, this one right here, yeah, this first page, and this will get talked about a little bit more, but he just mentioned that this area is zoned for residential agricultural cluster, five acres. That's what the RAC five stands for. And it kind of lines out with a lot of the things the county has, as they talk about clustering of homes. And my idea with, so all the way up to Maple Rise is this RAC area, that they will, he said in the letter he sent for, to planning zoning for this meeting before, he said this is in line with their future plan. If you go to the next, yeah, this right here, this just kind of shows, the goal for this is this, where that road comes up through in the blue, that historically has been a dry-farmed area. So that was our thought, even back to the RU two, was just to do not many lots, but put them on the dry-farmed area, and it would leave all of the irrigated and pasture land as ag land. So this is just kind of a rudimentary thrown up here, but kind of showing a lot one, which would be acre, acre and a half. Lot two, the same. And the lot three would be a buildable lot, hopefully just towards that west side of it, and then all the rest would stay in agricultural. So I think that's one thing, I don't think, like, if this was eighteen point seven-one, would have gone into six point two-four acres, I don't think that's the best thing, to have a home right in the middle of six acres. But something like this, it's clustered, it leaves more agricultural land open. I didn't do the subdivision right north of here, but I, well, I helped a client do that subdivision. John Bradley owned it. And kind of the same thing, it was sixteen point five acres, and that ended up two, like, one acre lots and an acre and a half lot, and the whole, all rest of it, thirteen acres stays agricultural. So I think this is in line with where Wellsville City, their future annexation plan, and this just kind of shows a different, like, the roundabout at the bottom here, that's really not quite round, but that's where the new frontage would be along the lot one and lot two, and then the last frontage would be around that roundabout for the three lots. So, any questions?
Does anybody have any questions from the Willets?
In your email, you referenced, I think one of your neighbors said something about it, insureds on the easement or something. Do you want to speak to that?
Uh, yes. So, if you go, so in the orange, I'm glad you mentioned, in the orange, before I purchased the property, there's a gentleman that owns a piece of land half a mile up, up that way of this picture, up north, and he basically ended up with an easement through the person that I purchased this land from, a twenty-one-foot easement, and it starts out way up by Highway twenty-three. It's better in the packet, the picture, but it comes across, that property owner's there, and then it comes, it goes north, and then it follows all the way here, and then it keeps following this property all the way up to his property. And it's a twenty-one-foot easement, it's been in place. That little packet I gave you, there's two sections that are stapled together. The original easement is all the landowners that he basically got an attorney and took to court over this. There were numerous landowners. It ended up with Janice, the one that owned this land before. He's the one that, her and him worked out the agreement, kind of let all the others off, and then, but this was in place before. The thing that wasn't in place is they hadn't recorded this. So another one of those packets that's stapled, in the very back page of that packet, you'll see that Exhibit A, Attachment A. It's black and white, but it shows that same line drawn. So that is the easement, and that's the same one. So we had to put together the meets and bounds. Now, there's a page in there that's all three sections that's typed. That first section says Shawn Betts easement. That is that easement. And then, it was recorded. Shawn Betts' signature's on there, and has all the right proper signatures. But his easement is, it's totally, this easement that my lot and the Larson lot share, it's not part of, his easement's totally separate than this easement.
Okay, and what did you say the acreages are on those lots? Lot one, you said was one and a half acres?
Just, yeah, it's not, definitely not, as a subdivision were to go through, that would be defined, but it would, I think, more like one and a half, like, lot one and two, I would say like one and a half acre lots. That's approximately four and a quarter acres. That is encompassing, that's like not in the snow, that's on that side of the road, that side of the blue. That whole area is about four and a quarter acres. So that's what I was thinking, about acre and a half on lot one, acre and a half on lot two, and then the remainder, hopefully, they would build their home somewhere up in this general area where the utilities would be, where everything would be a lot, dollar-wise to hook on to would be a lot more beneficial.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Please.
So, a little background history.
Can you tell us your name first, please?
Oh, it's Ree Bryce Darley. A little background history on the easement. The farmer did pay twenty-one thousand for the twenty-one-foot access to get to land. It was over twenty thousand, so. Anyway, on a side note, as you vision coming in out of Sardine Canyon or Wellsville Canyon, I don't know what you guys call it anymore, but I always call it Sardine Canyon. But as you come out of Sardine Canyon, if you look to the west, right, you'll see nice farmland and stuff. And I thought part of the county's goal was to make sure there wasn't many houses. Now, I know, what, eight months ago, you guys established a precedence where you let some person come in, and I think they subdivided it in one acre lot. So now, you've got a bunch of acre lots going in around Maple, it's called the Maple Rise area. But if you vision coming into Cache Valley, and you look west, and you see houses all the way up to the mountain, I mean, that's why the ten acres zoning was made, is to keep it rural. And to me, I keep coming to the same meeting, it seems like it's deja vu, but you guys have established a ten-acre minimum requirement. So, from, I go to the Planning Zoning Commission, and I come here, and it should be, does it meet the ten acres minimum requirements? No, then it should be denied. If not, you need to change your zoning rules. Because it should be, I don't know, it's just like, it should be ten acres, denied. Does it meet the minimum ten acres? No, denied. I know there's some special circumstances, but like I say, pretty soon, all these special circumstances is going to create a big issue, right, with houses going to be all over. You lose the nice, I guess, prettiness, you might say, of the valley. So, anyway, that's just my two cents. Besides, you got to look at other things like water, and police, fire, all that other requirements. So, just my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Tyler Willets. I saw you guys in that meeting in August. I have to apologize, I have a little frog in my throat, so I'll try to speak up so you hear me. But, a couple things I wanted to mention in regards to the gentleman's comments, just barely. In my mind, with Wellsville's annexation plan being five acres for that area, I feel like that ten-acre complaint should be brought up with Wellsville City, not necessarily combating every acreage change. Just a quick comment there. Keep it short and sweet. I'll just read a quote from our governor here, Governor Cox. He says, "To avoid becoming the first generation in history that makes life worse for our kids and grandkids," Cox said, "local residents from city, council members, down to community volunteers, need to start saying yes to new housing developments, because every time we say no to reasonable developments, we are the selfish generation. Everybody understands that we want our kids and grandkids to have a place to live," Cox said. "But everybody also agrees that we want to build where we can't see it. We just don't want it around us." Which I get, you know, Governor Cox makes a good point, that we like our space, and we want to keep it that way. But the world is growing, and Wellsville's a great place to live in particular. So we need to make room for reasonable developments such as this one, to let more people, good people, come in and live in the great city of Wellsville. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Phil Bankhead. Going off of that, why doesn't Jed, Jed has ten acres over there by him? If that's the case, why don't you develop that?
You can just address us.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the Darleys Springs, which is the spring just to the east of this property, and the water comes up just east of the property. These guys don't have any water rights, and they will have to have somebody drill, and we will be protesting those wells. All the water that goes, that goes from our spring waters four hundred, five hundred acres of irrigated ground. So if they, they'll have to have water rights, or they'll have to, and the way it's going, they'll get some water from Benson and transfer over to there, and then our springs will be not capable of irrigating. So, this plan, okay, you said that, Jed said that, or both of them said that it's fallen in line with Wellsville City. Well, guess what? It's not annexed into Wellsville City, and it won't be for a long time, because the property between there and Wellsville City won't be developed in his lifetime. He bought this ground from a person that he represented to try to sell it. And if, he said that he did the last one up there, and everyone that did it have got reason that they're unhappy about how he did it. And now he comes in, and he wants more, and a more, and a more. And like Bryce said, it's zoned for ten acres. It's got nothing to do with Wellsville, because it's not annexed in there. It's not your job to make a living for this man. He just comes around, he changes it here, and here, and here. This has been the tenth time we've been in here. How long is this going to go on? That's all I got. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Bankhead.
Hi, I'm Lacey Lichty. I just wanted to add, with the Wellsville City part, I know it's not part of Wellsville, but Wellsville City has written in every time we've had a mini-meeting and denied it, because it does not agree with their future plan. If they do annex, what they said is they want five acre lots for a home, but that each home has to have their own road for each home. but that each home has to have their own road for each home. That was Wellsville's plan, is saying five acres with a road for each home. So that would not ever go in the future of Wellsville's plan in advance. Just want to clarify that because that was not right. And Wellsville has sent in every time denying this request. But I'm going to read. "I am writing this to express my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning request for Willetts RU5 project. As a member of this community and someone who has direct experience with the safety concerns along Highway 23, I urge you to carefully consider the potential consequence this project could have on the safety of the children who rely on special needs buses." This, that, the special needs bus service, children ranging from 3 to 19, they stop multiple times a day. At 6:00 a.m., twice at 8:00 a.m., 11:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., and 3:00 p.m. And one of those stops is less than 100 feet away from where that road is. And the other one is 300 feet down from that road. So you're having a bus stop stop there multiple times. And the speed limit on that highway is 55 miles an hour. And it already carries a lot of traffic because you have a lot of people commuting on that, a lot of big trucks. I have personally ridden the special needs bus for 11 years now, and I witnessed firsthand how dangerous it can be with drivers frequently passing buses with the red lights on and oncoming traffic. And I've almost witnessed a lot of children get hit because of this. People don't pay attention, they're going 55, more than 55. And I, the traffic of coming on and on that road. This is a major concern, and adding more traffic, approving this rezone would only increase the risk. The increased traffic of this proposed development to the bus stops would create an unsafe environment for the children getting on and off the bus when we cross them. The concern of the safety of these children should be a primary consideration as we have a duty to protect their well-being. Passing this rezoning would create a hazardous situation on Highway 23, and a ripple effect of increased traffic could lead to more accidents or fatalities. I'm also concerned, who would be liable? In an event of an accident because of the traffic? Would it be Jed Willetts, or would it be you guys that pass this rezoning? We need to be careful considering the long-term impacts and prioritize the safety of our community's children, all above anything. Mr. Willetts was fully aware of the zoning restrictions when he purchased the property. This is not the first attempt, and it's important to note that the north subdivision that he put together, which consists of three homes, and it's not connected to Highway 23, has a lot of traffic already, just on that little bit. So just add that to Highway 23, it's going to create a mess. I would like to add that this property doesn't even have enough frontage to have that traffic that's traveling in and out of the, that's a concern as well. I would like to add that the road directly west, there's an intersection. That would be an intersection, and directly west of it, there is road that leads to a gravel pit. And I can't tell you how many times there's heavy equipment trucks coming up and down that road. So you're going to have these with the gravel pit, adding this and this, and then the Highway 23, 55 miles an hour, and you have a special needs bus dropping off these kids ranging, it's actually a three-year-old that gets dropped off there. And so I strongly urge you to reject the rezoning to request the insurance safety of our children, the integrity of our community, and the preservation of the transportation for all. Please think about the well-being of the children who uses the bus service. This should be a top priority. And thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Can we try and keep it to about three minutes, if you could? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mariah Davis. I'm part of the Darley Trust. So I technically didn't grow up here, but I do have land down there. And I just want to say, going off of Governor Cox's quote, I grew up in Utah County, I live there now. I don't know if you guys have been down there, but it's a mess. We don't have those zoning laws, and now you have house piling upon house. And I grew up coming up here to this beautiful place. And now I can't share that with my kids. So I guarantee you, there's not a housing shortage because every piece of land in Pleasant Grove, Utah, has been bought out, including all the groves. So I just want you guys to take that into consideration, that we need places to stay like this so our kids can grow up knowing a life outside of the crazy environment that is. So thank you.
I do have a letter from one of the neighbors right next to me, and he wasn't able to make it. So he wanted me to read this one. Plus, the other neighbor, Dwight, he couldn't make it. But his reasoning, too, he couldn't make it was because, he goes, he has property on Cache County Road, and he doesn't have enough footage. And he was denied, so he doesn't understand why this is.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Teresa Lickte. I'm right by the division. Okay, this is, oh, and also when the gravel trucks come out, they're not, they're supposed to only go 15, but they're barreling out of there. And it's not the dump trucks, it's the long ones. And when they go around, they take, they go over onto the shoulder. It's not, they stay on the road, okay? Because they're the big, long ones. Some of them are the double ones. And since the Archbald's gravel pit, they've been digging out, they've been having a lot of water come down there. And they now have had to do sandbags right where their road would be, and by Elna Hamilton's. And we've had a mild winter. So that's going to turn into a mess when we do have a winter. Okay, Mark Lyons, that's his name. Mark, my name is Mark Lyons. And while I can't be in attendance this evening, I am curious how long and why this rezoning request continues to go on. Initially, a zoning request is permission to build nine homes on this property was recommended but was denied and rejected for various reasons. Some which included by Utah for not having the proper access. By the City of Wellsville's future plans, they also wanted, they had concerns over water and potential harm to the wetland, and some concerns over getting a general expansion precedent in this area. Adjustments were made by the applicant to perhaps to get an exception for the access, which if approved, fewer homes were built. Would have effectively prohibited other property owners to potentially someday build a home on their own property, which was one of the reasons they purchased the property. Those adjustments still didn't dissolve any of the reasons for the prior recommendations for denial. And I'm not sure how those will be resolved. One requirement was 500 feet between driveways. I doubt there's even 100 feet between driveways. And it currently is set up, and no way to get to the 500 feet requirement to the access road suggested. It's still eventually not acceptable to the City of Wellsville, as I understand it. And the precedent of the expansion and water use still remain. The rezoning applicant and his son mentioned they just wanted to have a place for him to be able to afford to build a home for his young family, given the difficulties of the family and affordable housing. I am not opposed for anyone building one home on this property for that family or someone else. At what point will this issue be closed so that we can all get on to what other things that matter most? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Kevin Bankhead, brother to Phil. We do have a farm down there. My concern mainly is water. This ground, as Jed said, there's no secondary water on it. Even though it's below the canal, they don't own any water. There's no water. So they put those houses on there, how much lawn do they put in? How much water do they take? All of that is within less than a half a mile of the springs that all of us guys have a water right to. It's been there for hundreds of years, it's been there a long time. And that is a major concern for me, is they're going to take the water that does not belong to them to water their lawn. The other thing is, it's zoned R10. The closest R5 to them is probably close to a mile. Right? And that was Maple Rise. Don't know who got that pushed through. That's not Jed's fault. Somebody else, somebody else here did that, right? They, in the planning and zoning, the last meeting, they talked about a MON property, and they said, well, it's R10, we want to go to R5. They said, well, because it's right next to R5, we can't tell them no because it's right next to R5. My argument is, there's no R5 anywhere near this property. No reason to be making it. R5 now, things get closer, development comes, sure, knock yourself out, develop it. But it doesn't make any sense now.
Thank you.
Try to make it short and sweet. My name's Jim Lickte. So I talked to Scott Wells as well. Okay. Wellsville City future planning for that property is five acres per building permit with five acres of open space per each permit. Does that make sense? Five and five, so it's actually 10. You've got to have the open space to match it. And they also, future use, would require a through street all the way through that property for the city to use. That's another requirement they have for that property as well. So, okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this property?
Quick comment on the access?
Please, make it quick.
So in your packet, there's a section that has, it starts with a UDOT approved that was put in. So that UDOT's been completed. It comes from the highway, and then there's a roundabout currently. So there's no 500 feet needed out on Highway 23. That was a long, long time ago. This easement has been put in and approved. And then this roundabout is basically one lot, one home on this lot, and one home on the lot south, the Larson's. And then that UDOT meeting, they mentioned where, you know, that as the future road comes in, up to, we were, up to five would service off that road. That road that comes down on that blue line, that would be the new frontage. Along that line would be the new frontage for those lots. And then we put in another approved turnaround at the end. And I don't know the, that first paper, this one here, that's from Wellsville City's master plan. And there's no 10 acres, it's a five acre. And there's not another five acres there. There's just a lot of stuff that's in that packet. Even if we extend this to the next time you guys read through that, there's just a lot of stuff, so.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Did you talk, I just, did UDOT know that the 21-foot upper access would be applied? That's all we.
I'm sure that he, anything that's done with UDOT would have to be approved by UDOT. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak different? Okay.
Moved and seconded that we close the public hearing, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right. Ordinance 2025-10, the Gally subdivision rezone.
Someone leave their wallet or phone. Yes, so this is a request to rezone 30.62 acres from the agricultural A10 to the rural 5 zone. Again, an approval of this rezone would allow for a maximum of six buildable lots versus just three that would be allowed under the current zoning. So in keeping with kind of what was discussed in the previous one, this is in Mendon, along the UDOT road. There was a property just immediately to the south that initially came in for an RU2 and was denied, the Marshall-MON trust rezone. But then they came back with a request for an RU5. In this instance, there are, so that is immediately adjacent south. There's also another RU5 property to the south and east that was recently approved, and then an older RU2 that was approved. I don't have the date in here, but probably 10 to 15 years ago, but they've never maxed out their potential. So there are a lot of more adjacent rezones that are compatible. And so in going through their findings of fact, the Planning Commission did note that and, you know, acknowledged it since they started allowing the RU5, it was hard to tell the next person no. So they recommended approval with a four to two recommendation. The two not in favor of the rezone were against it due to water concerns along the Mendon bench there. Because there have anecdotally been concerns about water consumption and not having enough in that area. So it was recommended for approval because it was consistent with the purpose of the RU5 zone, which is to allow for residential estate development in a low-density pattern that can allow for rural subdivisions and smaller-scale ag uses. And this type of development should not be located and designed to not unreasonably impede adjacent ag uses. The other thing with this, because it is off a UDOT road and that other parcel to the south was recommended for, or was approved for the RU5, they will be having to work with UDOT and each other to figure out access. Because as mentioned, there is spacing concerns along a major arterial UDOT road. And so they will have to work together to get a private road in there to provide access. So there's just perhaps one or two points of access instead of multiple for all possible homes that could be developed out there. And then those private roads would also provide the frontage for each lot because they wouldn't all be fronting off Highway 23. So that interior access would also serve as a private road that each property needs to have 90 feet of frontage on a public or private road. So just to clarify that. And yeah, with that again, they did recommend approval. There were no public comments in that case that I'm aware of. I may have to backtrack on that. But anyway, if you do have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Angie, I have a question. Is that close, how does it relate to the Mendon City annex? Like, is it on their, is their plan to be annexed?
Let me just double check. It is within their Mendon City future annexation.
Is there anyone here to speak for the public for this proposal? You're good, just make sure you tell us your name.
My name's Gray Wilson. I'm the agent for the developer. One update for you guys, we are under contract to purchase. The Marshall-MON property will be closing eminently. So we have started the UDOT application process and paid the fee. So we don't have to coordinate with the Marshall-MON property. We are the Marshall-MON property. I have, and I don't know if you've got it here that you could share, our proposed subdivision right now is a total of seven lots over the 44.6 acres. It keeps that upper west lot a little over 15 acres just to offer a little bit of distance from the people above the canal. Those are generally, say, three to seven acre lots, something like that. But it does, it pushes that density down a little bit. We feel that we're consistent with RU5, we're consistent with the Mendon general plan, we're consistent with the MON property and the surrounding neighborhood. And then we've already met with UDOT and paid the fee. So we think we're good there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here to speak to this project? Okay. I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Moved and seconded that we close the public hearing on the Gally subdivision rezone. Okay. Or to number D, Resolution 2025-0. Are those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Maybe one day we'll have a good cheer. Okay, all right. Let's move on to the opening of the 2025 budget. Brittany?
Okay, so I'll just summarize the amendment for the public hearing and then we can talk about more details later. Yeah, okay. So we kind of broke this amendment up into different sections. We broke them into additional requests for funding, additional, unexpended POs from the prior year to be rolled forward into this year's budget, and then ARPA-related projects, and then the tax admin allocation, the effect from the amendments on the tax administration allocation. So if we were to approve all of the amendments, the total in additional requests on the general fund, fund balance is an additional $377,000. Additional use of fund balance for the PO rollovers for the unexpended purchase orders from last year is $1,370,000. Funding given back to the general fund for ARPA projects is 38.6, well, 38,600 back to the general fund. And then the tax admin allocation would give back 2,300. So the total additional use of fund balance in the general fund would be $1,706,165, which would bring total use of fund balance for the 2025 budget of the general fund balance to $3,295,004. I just wanted to point out, the other, the additional requests in other funds look like they're very large, so I just kind of wanted to explain those as well. So in the other funds, the additional request is $6,127. That is related to the $6 million in the open space fund. And so we're just using that. Related to purchase orders is $20 million. But 14 million of that is related to COGS projects that were unfinished. ARPA-related projects is a return back to fund balance of $6 million. So this one looks funny because we originally had budgeted for the ARPA project to come from the ARPA. We created a new ARPA fund. But in the budget, we had all of the projects coming from the ARPA fund balance. So we're giving, we're returning all of the funding back to the fund balance because we're going to recognize that revenue. So it'll stay in the fund balance and we'll just change it from unearned revenue into revenue recognition. And then the tax admin allocation will use 2,300 in the assessing and collecting fund. So the total additional use of fund balance in other funds will be 19.5 million. So I just wanted to, anything else? Okay.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to the public hearing on the opening of the budget? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing on the opening of the budget. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we are to the proposals for consideration of action. The first one we have is ordinance 2025-08, the Funk-Richman gravel pit project rezone. Angie, do you want to come on back up? Okay, does anyone have any further questions for Angie or things that they would like to discuss with the council as we consider this? Yeah, I'm pulling it up. Any council members?
I know the area very well, very well, up and through there. And, and there are a lot of springs as well. There were springs down below that probably are fed by that aquifer. That's whatever small amounts of water there is. And if that was a disruption, there would be a lot of homes that would be without water. And then it is a huge wildlife area for wintertime. And I'm, I'm not in favor of this. And I noticed that it was, was it only one vote for?
I know, it was unanimous.
It was unanimous then, so. And with that, I, I would support the planning zoning efforts in that. And I would make a motion, we suspend the rules and support the denial of ordinance 2025-08, Funk-Richman gravel pit rezone, property rezone.
Not right now, sorry. Okay, I have a movement, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the council members about that motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we vote for denial of ordinance 2025-08, the Funk-Richman gravel pit property rezone. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the denial. Okay, the next one we have is the ordinance 2025-09, the Willetts' RU5 rezone. Open that up to the council for discussion. We had a lot of testimony on that.
I had, I had one question that, is this a flag log? Is this a?
So yeah, it does not have any frontage currently on a public road. So it is set back off the highway. They would be required to provide frontage through a private road, which is what they've started with that UDOT access and the easement with the, the property to the south. I think it's Larson. So that, that is the way that they can provide frontage. The issues with that is it would be a private road. As was talked about, the subdivision to the north, the Wellsville Rising, that's on a private road as well. So we have multiple private roads with no connectivity, which is an issue I think public work has with this type of development. That Wellsville Rising subdivision also to the north was, was done under a different subdivision density calculation. So it was the last of the 1970s density calculations where if you had a property that was in the same size and configuration as it was in 1970, you got the first three lots at a higher density at one per two. And then you could get, then you were, went back to the underlying density of one for 10. So, but that, that's why that subdivision is the way it is because it was the last of that 1970 era allowance for a higher density. Yeah, so again, there is no road frontage, as mentioned, which is a requirement for subdivisions. The private road would accommodate that. But again, it would result in a minor private road with just a 33-foot front, 33-foot wide easement that couldn't accommodate more than five homes on it without being upgraded to a major private road. And then again, there's just the issue with, none of these roads connect. There's just private roads everywhere. And I believe, and Matt could speak to this point, there might also be a planned county road along the south end of that property that doesn't align with how that access is currently configured.
Angie, what's the distance between those two private roads?
Well, as somebody mentioned, the Wellsville Rising is actually off the county road. So Highway 23 and then, I think it's 4,400 south comes like this. And then that private road's off of here, but, so it's not off the.
Angie, can I ask a clarification question?
Mm-hmm.
I spent a few years on Logan City's Planning and Zoning Commission. And if, if this property was zoned a certain, like, like 12 lots or 12 lots per subdivision or whatever. There was, there were certain instances where you could cluster those homes on one side of the property and leave more open space. But those were really special circumstances. Other than that, if it's zoned RU5, then you need five acres per lot. Will you explain that part to me, where these lots are so much smaller than five acres?
Yeah, it's, it's a confusing concept. But what our density calculations allow for, so like the A-10 is one lot for every 10 acres, that gives you the overall maximum density of a property. So if you have 42 acres, the most under an A-10 you can get is four lots.
They could be smaller.
They can be smaller, minimum of a half-acre lot. Usually one-acre minimums are the best for well and septic separation. But yeah, but you could make those build a lot smaller and then keep the rest in an agromainder for continued farming or whatnot, so.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
I have a procedural question, if I can ask that too. Were this one, there was some discrepancy on the Wellsville Future Land Use Plan. There was a UDOT meeting that occurred after planning and zoning reviewed it. Are there instances where with new information, it gets sent back to planning and zoning for review again? Or is it?
Not in my time here.
Even if information is updated?
Maybe Taylor could answer that one better. Catch off guard there.
I can repeat the question. The essence of it is if there's new information that planning and zoning didn't have access to, that they may have made their decision based off the information they had, but that's updated now, does it ever get sent back to them to review it a second time with that new information?
I mean, it's, it's not unheard of. I have heard that happening. But typically, when they make their decisions, it's based on the information that they have and then they move forward. And if there is new information that needs to be reconsidered, typically that takes the form of like a new application or an amendment. So for example, for a conditional use permit or something else like that, it would be an amendment to what was already decided, so.
Thanks.
Okay, does anyone else have anything, any questions or anything they would like to discuss about this rezone? Anyone want to make a motion or do you want to continue it? I'm open.
Was this parcel, you say, when was this parcel's? Was it ever separated off those frontage, those other couple lots, yeah?
I don't know if it ever had frontage. But yeah, there's been some boundary line adjustments over the years. So even though it doesn't meet the same configuration or size as previously, since no new lots were created, it's still considered a legal parcel.
Has this ever been an agromainder?
No. An agromainder is technically just part of a subdivision. So it could have been green belt. It probably is still green belt, but.
But it was part of the agromainder, remainder of another two.
No, no. Yeah, because none of those other parcels have been part of a subdivision otherwise. Yeah, it may have been, but in this case, it doesn't.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion from somebody. Okay, if we, if nobody's ready to make a motion, then that, it would be continued to our next meeting if you guys want to spend the next couple of weeks gathering more information. I don't know that it would go back to, planning and zoning is an advisory board. We are the legislative decision makers. And so it's up to us to now take that on and review that, so.
I appreciate everyone who made a comment. I realize people have families and jobs and can be intimidating to come up here and speak to us. But I think the participation's important. It helps us make a decision.
Yeah, thank you to everyone. Okay, so that one is continued. C, ordinance 2025-10, the Galley subdivision rezone. Anybody have questions for Angie about that?
Angie, I do. Some months ago, we had that MON, it was referenced that there was MON, I don't remember the other name that was associated with it, but that property that was there, that was 10 acres. So I think the proponent, if he's still here, I don't see him.
Yeah.
Yeah, he came in and said he, you purchased that? So this is combined?
I'm the agent.
Okay, so this is combined with that? So that's just one access point onto the Highway 23 now between these two developments?
Yeah, so that subdivision plot we showed up here covers the entire border.
Okay, okay, so that's what my one question was, is it was now just the one access for the, going on to the highway for both of those?
Yeah, and with seven proposed lots, that would have to meet the major, my, major private road standard, which is the 66 feet. So if it ever were turned into a public road in the future, it already meets that requirement.
It already meets that standard. Thank you, that was my follow-up question. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Angie? Or things you want to discuss about this rezone?
I thought this one here, because the proximity, really close to all those other RU5s, right close to Mendon, within Mendon's area and everything, I think it follows suit there. So I would therefore move to suspend the rules on this initial and follow suit also and support planning and zoning in their decision and pass ord, and pass ordinance 2025-10, the Galley subdivision rezone.
Have a movement, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2020, suspend the rules and approve ordinance 2025-10, the Galley subdivision rezone. Is there any more discussion about that? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, okay, back to the opening of the budget. Brittany? I have to admit that I'm confused.
Yeah.
And I was in appropriations. Yeah.
Is Matt here?
Yeah, Matt is here. You might want to come up and be ready too. But as far as I recall, in the appropriations meeting, we talked about the 377,000 that was new request for the 2025 general fund. And then there was about 5 million that was P, purchase orders from 2024 that had been previously approved that were brought in because they were done in November, December. That was all I remember talking about. And then you were talking about 19 million and 5 million, and you lost me. And I, and I'm kind of lost on this page too. Can you go a little slower?
Absolutely. So the, the PO rollovers, we, we went back and reviewed a few of them that we had questions on. I had, there were a few wraps.
Just one second. Can we have it quiet, please? If you want to have a discussion, you could leave it out in the hall. But we're trying to hear some really important information, so thank you. Thank you. That's very possible. Okay, right now we need to deal with this.
Okay, sorry. Lost my train of thought.
Sorry. We talked about the PO rollovers.
Thank you. Oh, yes, so we had some questions on some of the county department that had wraps projects that were ongoing more than their two years. In the wraps, in restaurant, award letters, it says that the entity that is receiving the funding has two years to spend their project. And we had a handful of projects that exceeded that. And so we were following up with department heads on whether they had come to you to extend some of those projects. And a lot of them were not. And so we decided to return the funding back to the wraps and restaurant funds. And so a lot of those PO rollovers have been removed. And so that's why we went from 5 million to 1.3 million is because we were giving back some of those fundings. And then I think part of that 5 million, I'm trying to remember because I don't have my old ones.
Yeah, I, I didn't bring my, I, I kind of, when I glanced at this first, I thought it was just the 377 and then the POs, and then now.
I do know, we had two amendments that were originally accidentally included under the PO section that we decided to move. Well, one was ARPA and one was PO that we decided didn't follow under those categories. And so we moved them to the additional request. And I can tell you which amendments those are. They were, number 20 for the CJC is requesting a donation that they received in 2024 to be rolled, to use into their 2025 budget. And so this one was accidentally included in the PO requests. And so we just moved it to the additional request because there's no PO tied to this donation. And then the second one that we moved was number 22. It was originally included with the ARPA section amendments. But this is the portion of the Sheriff's Office Control, HVAC Control Project that was awarded. And this is the portion that is not ARPA-eligible. So I think with that project, they had, because it affects the whole sheriff's complex instead of just the corrections facility, there was a portion of the project that was ineligible for ARPA. And so in talking with Wes, we felt that we should put the ineligible portion as a new request because it will require use of fund balance.
Okay, so that, so that is another 88,000 use of fund balance that we originally thought was going to be covered under ARPA expenses, but they're not eligible?
Yes.
Okay, is that, is that 88,000 included in the 377 number? Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that. And then we've got unexpended 2024 POs. And that goes down to which number? Like, because you started talking about some other things after that.
Yes, okay, so, so just for the general fund, so the 377,000 are all of our additional requests.
Okay.
The general fund rollover for POs is now 1.3 million, or that 1,370,131.
And that was money that was previously allocated for last year, approved and budgeted for last year?
Yep, and then they just were unable to spend those funds last year. And so they were not requested in their 2025 budget.
Okay.
I believe we're going to work with department heads this year to make sure that any projects that they are hoping to start this year, that they are worried may not finish this year, that they will include them in their 2026 budget requests. So that that way we don't have to move budget at the beginning of the year to cover those projects.
Biggest reason that they were not expended in 2024?
Probably depends on the project.
An example would be, for example, public defender's office, they ordered some furniture in December. It didn't arrive until January, as an example. And so the funds therefore were not expended and they're asking to roll those funds over so that they can use 2025 funds to buy that 2024 furniture that was ordered in '24 but arrived in '25.
They were planning on that furniture, get that in 2024, but didn't order it till December?
It was in their budget already.
Yeah.
Fire preparation prevents pitiful poor performance.
Right, and that was, that was a question that gendered a great deal of debate.
Why didn't they order it in July?
Some of them aren't, aren't so, a better, a better example would be like the fire department has a couple of POs for fire trucks.
Yep.
And so, you know, we order it and then it takes two years for them to build it and so we have to carry those forward.
Like the, kind of the smaller little things like that, if they know they're going to get it, there isn't reason for, why wait till December?
Okay, so that's the 1.37 million and then starting on line 59. Where it says ARPA grant projects. Is that, is that, is that starting something new?
On line 59?
Yeah, where it's, right above it, it says ARPA grant projects.
Yes, so number 59 would start all of the ARPA related amendments. So in appropriations, I was trying to fix the ARPA budget. So we had, in 2024, budgeted in the November 2024 budget amendment, we had requested a transfer out to the ARPA fund. And then in the 2025 budget, we estimated what projects would still be open. And we knew for sure, like the Culver projects was going to be open and we knew for sure that the BST trailhead was going to be open. And so we put most of the funding into those lines. And so this is just, all of these entries from 59 until 76 are all of the entries to either remove projects that we were unable to secure with contracts to be able to expend beyond December 31st, 2024, or to add additional projects that we didn't estimate or we didn't know if they would have a remaining balance. And so we're just fixing that. And then like I said, when we, I was trying to summarize in the public hearing was that originally we had budgeted all of our ARPA projects to be funded from the new created ARPA fund balance. But we determined that we, after talking with Wes, we didn't need to do that because we would, so it's currently because we moved it in 2024, it is sitting in the fund balance. But instead of recognizing it as fund balance, we're going to recognize it as unearned revenue. And so then we will, in 2025, whatever is expended will recognize as revenue. And so we traded, we turned back in the budget amendment, we're returning that back to the general fund balance so that we can recognize it as revenue. So we're just making those few corrections in those amendments.
So down to line 76, those are returning things back to, out of the ARPA fund balance into the general fund balance?
Well, so they're still within the ARPA fund, it's just moving it from use of fund balance to revenue recognition.
Okay. But they're all in a separate fund balance of ARPA fund balance, not in, okay.
Yes.
And then the tax admin update, I don't think we talked about that in appropriations. Will you explain that to?
Yes, so we have a few departments that, that based on their expenditures, we allocate a portion of their expenditures to the assessing and collecting fund. IT was one of them and I think they had a PO that was rolling over. Let's see, I can find it. It's amendment number?
It's 77.
24. So in amendment number 24, they have a PO that they're requesting to roll over. So IT, their tax allocation is 30%. So 30% of amendment number 24 is the $2,300 that we're allocating to the tax admin, admin allocation.
Okay.
And so it's reducing the general, use of fund balance in the general fund and adding it to the assessing and collecting fund.
Collecting, okay.
So blue is kind of separating out the different sections of the amendment. The yellow highlights are the ones that are different from when we met in appropriations. So we were unaware of when appropriations was scheduled and we're actually planning on appropriations being held a week later than it was. And so we were underprepared for our meeting and so we had quite a few changes. And then we just wanted to have those easily identifiable, which ones had changed since our meeting. So I can go through each of those if you would like.
You know what, Brittany, I'm going to suggest, and it's, I guess it's not up to me to make a moment, a motion, but I would suggest that we continue this and give us some time, especially those of us on the appropriations committee, to make sure we understand it and then we can bring our recommendation to the rest of the council. Because there, there's just a few things here that were not there, like you said during appropriations. If that's okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
Just spend some time with us and we'll make sure that we understand what we're doing. That's a lot of, a lot of.
A lot of changes.
Yes.
So the question I have, and this is, I don't think this has changed since we had our meeting as appropriations. The net change to our budget though for 2025 is the 377,000, right?
No.
Additional, additional.
Additional requests, yes.
Excuse me, the additional request from the council.
When we close out a year, anything that was unexpended from '24 will go back to fund balance?
Yes.
So technically for the 2025 budget, even though we're rolling over the POs?
Already approved, is what we're saying. Those are approved, we've already seen those requests.
They were previously approved. Yes.
They were approved in a prior budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
Previously approved.
That's why they got to put them in an opening.
Yeah.
Yes. Of that 377,000, 230,000 of that is for the sheriff's office. So the sheriff, bless his heart, gave us a whole list of, of items in his budget of items we could cut. And then finance came back through and said, hey, you know, we think these areas we could also cut. And we inadvertently reduced his overtime budget in the criminal division so that it turned out to be a negative budget of a negative 35,000. And so 230 of that is to bring it back to what the sheriff actually requested of the 195,000 for overtime. So that leaves 147-ish thousand dollars of additional requests outside of that mistake that we made in the 25 budget.
Okay. And then do you have, this is not fair because I didn't ask this before meeting. So if you don't know this, I totally get it. But do you have an idea, we had a general idea of how much we'd be using of fund balance for 2024? Do you know what that ended up being?
That's a tricky question because they turned it, the stuff that hadn't been expended, they turned it back in.
They did turn it back into fund, yeah.
Yeah, so.
It did go into fund balance, which.
I'm, I'm.
In 2025.
I'm working on, but trying, making the transfers for the, the closeout of 2024. And part of that project, Wes had me keeping track of the fund balance. And our preliminary numbers show that it was, we're close to what Wes had estimated for you guys.
Estimated about 6 million, I think.
Uh, I think we, I think we were estimating where, I, all I have is where the, the fund balance would end. And so I think he had told you guys we would be somewhere between 21 and 24 million where we would end. And I think our preliminary numbers on running, on booking those transfers for '24, I think we were like 22, 21, high 21 into 22. It was somewhere right in there.
But that means a million and a half of those weren't spent because of these purchase orders that are getting rolled into 20 and 25, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Brittany, thank you so much. I know how hard you work on all this.
Yeah, thank you.
And the, the lack of understanding is ours, not, not any.
There's a moving target. We've made some changes since in order to be more accurate and I certainly understand.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that, that we clarify some of this and, and I don't, I don't like to pass something that I'm confused and so.
We're not opposed to giving more time to talk about things. So if there's anything we can do to help you guys in the meantime, any questions you have, please let us know and we look forward to meeting with you again next meeting.
If there are urgent components too, maybe you could notify us and is it possible to just review some of those at a time?
Well, I wonder if we could go ahead and pass just the portion of that 377,000, the items one through, what is it? Help me out, Brittany.
Kind of like one through nine.
Well, so we changed a few items between, so one through five is exactly the same as it was presented to council or to appropriations. Number six changed. The original request in appropriations was 50,000, but I think there was a little bit of a miscommunication. I think 50 was his total contract. And so 13,500 is the only additional portion he needs to add, to cover that contract, to add the third floor cleaning services. So that one is reduced from what it was in appropriations. Number eight is a brand new request. Rod has been negotiating with Smithfield Fire to help staff the Richmond's fire station. And so he's just requesting to move budget for part-time staff that was budgeted for the Richmond Fire Station to move it from part-time employees to his professional services line so that it could be paid out to the contract with Smithfield City. So that one is a new request and was not presented to appropriations.
Okay, we're not going to, let's not pick and choose then.
Okay.
Let's get a handle on the whole thing.
I think we're okay to wait two weeks.
Okay, perfect.
If I may ask, just are we okay on the overtime for the sheriffs?
Yeah.
Yes, so it just showing that he's going over budget at the moment, but I think the overall budget has enough. We could wait two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Brittany and Matt, thank you so much. We'll, we will, I will be calling you. We'll, we'll get this taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we took out the, okay, we need to do nine E. The resolution 2025-08 authorizing Nibley City annexation, creating an unincorporated island. Angie, you're on again.
Yeah, so this is an annexation of 52.29 acres into Nibley City from unincorporated county. Originally, this was approved by Nibley City in October of '24 and brought to you in November just to get, you either need to agree or disagree to accept an annexation that creates an unincorporated island or peninsula per state law. At that time, the annexation plat left a gap along 1500 West of the county right of way. And so, yeah, it didn't seem like the best idea to move forward with that. Where we have like a, you know, I don't know what the linear feet is, but a few hundred linear feet of frontage that's a county road and then it goes back to a city road from the north to the south. So the county engineer has been working with Nibley City. Sorry, thank you Dirk, by the way, for turning the air conditioning off because it was really hot. I'm still having effects. Anyway, so the county, or county engineer and county surveyor worked with Nibley City to get that annexation boundary changed. But by taking that 1500 West gap to complete the connectivity from the, the south air, south boundary of Nibley to this new annexation parcel, it did, see, I totally did forget my memory. Anyway, so it was taken back, but now it does create an unincorporated island. That's where I was going with that. Thank you. So that parcel you see in the middle, instead of being in a peninsula now, it is an island. But our county road manual does require that if that parcel came in for development as a county development, since it's still an unincorporated, it would have to receive approval from Nibley City because they're accessing from their city roads. They'd have to meet all requirements of Nibley City if they were to develop that section. And so again, the state code requires that an unincorporated area may not be annexed to a municipality unless it will not leave or create an unincorporated island or peninsula unless the county and municipality have otherwise agreed. So previously, Nibley City had approved the, accepted the annexation without this 1500 West, but they are meeting this week to accept it with that. And so the action before you is just whether you would like to agree to allow that annexation that will create this unincorporated island or disagree and protest the annexation.
What happens if we protest it?
It goes through a process and might go to the boundary line commission. I'm not sure what that looks like. I won't call out Taylor again.
So what did they discuss with the roads department about that, that little section of 1500 West between Nibley City and this annexation?
It says right here.
Nibley would take that.
Yes.
And that's why we have an island.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it shows on the annexation plat that's attached and then maybe more visceral, visually appearing.
Nibley City would go all the way around that one little.
Yeah. Okay, it will just be a floating island there.
Got it.
And that was, I think, my biggest qualm that I had with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, was that that road was substandard and, and didn't want the county to have to have a substandard road.
Yeah, they're willing to take on that road.
600 feet or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that means they will own the road all the way to the bottom of that, the annexation.
Well, without doing that, that just, that really puts our roads department, theirs, you know, jumping over each other for just such short stretches, it just isn't, it becomes a lot of money in a small little area, so.
Matt, is this something that you've worked with the staff at Nibley City and you are okay with it?
Okay. Any other discussion about that? Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to agree. No, I move to approve.
It is initial.
It's initial, so.
I move to suspend the rules and approve resolution 2025-08 authorizing Nibley City annexation, creating an unincorporated island.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is into our regular business.
Thank you, Angie.
Yes, Angie, thank you so much. Okay, we already did the interlocal. The, let's, let's go to C. Let's, let's go down to C and then leave B. Let's talk about the formation of a study committee that's prescribed in the new code that's 17-52A-3. If you all recall our last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about changing our form of government. We backed away from the legislation that was doing it, but talked about the possibility of forming a study committee so that our voters could make that choice. I don't know how everyone feels about that, but I thought this would be a good time to discuss it. So if we're going to move on with that, we need to do it so that they could get an answer to us back by December of this year so that we could move forward and let voters know what would be on the ballot in November of 2026.
Sandy, do you know how that legislation ended? Is it still, if it fails, it goes back to three member commission?
It is, but there's a legislative session between now and then and I'm, I've talked to Senator Wilson about that. He thinks pretty sure we could change that. There was enough concern. Representative Donegan was concerned about that default. I think we can change that default to the status quo so that if it fails, the status quo remains. But that's, that is, if, if we do the study committee, it would really be dependent on making that change in the next legislative session. So that is something to consider. Anybody have an opinion?
I would say, yeah, wait till that changes.
Well, we, by then it's too late to do the study committee for the 2026 ballot.
Yeah, we could push it later. I don't. I, there's nothing from anyone I've talked to, the majority of my constituents that I've reached out to, I actually haven't had anyone suggest that we change our form of government. So at least with the people I've talked to that I represent, there's no, there's nothing, no urgency driving this. So my opinion would be to wait until that precedes it.
I think when we say urgency, it's just to align it with an election cycle so that when somebody declares for that position, they just know if that position will exist, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I think that's what we're saying, urgency, yeah.
Yeah, until the end of 2020, it would be 2029 before it would go into effect.
They would know for declaring for what, for what term they would actually be declaring for.
Right, like I was reading in the past and when we established this form of government that we have now, I think they voted on it in '84 and it went into effect in '86.
It would be the same thing.
I do understand that.
Yeah. Barbara, do you want to weigh in on that? Do you have?
I was just wondering what the cost of forming a committee and all of that would be for the county.
I don't know. That's a really good question. I don't know that there is a cost unless there's people. I would hate to think that people would do it for payment because. because then they're maybe obligated. I think the study committee that they talked about in legislation was volunteer, but I don't know that for fact. So that's a really good question. We would have to, I don't know, Taylor, maybe you can. You're looking that up. I believe it said something about they could be paid for, like if they had to travel, there was gas, but it could be renumerated.
I guess what I'm concerned about, cost versus are we gonna do anything about it once we have the committee reports?
Well, if we do the committee and they give us a report, we will take it to the voters. And the voters may say yes, they may say no. And they may come back, the study committee may come back and say, keep it the way it is. I mean, that's absolutely something that is up to the, I think a study committee could get a lot of public input. They could talk to previous legislators. There would be a lot of avenues to discuss, to get a recommendation. Dave, what, tell me what you think. Not gonna say it today?
No.
Okay, Mark?
I think, like, similar to what I think Barbara's saying, I'm concerned with there being a lot of time effort put into this and then maybe there's, nothing changes. That's, I think, something we could likely see because I haven't been hearing of any push from any citizenry or constituency that I've spoken with about wishing for a change or wanting a change.
Okay. You're not gonna say?
No.
Okay. All right, I still believe pretty strongly that we need to explore that, but it's not my decision, it's a council decision, and it still sounds like we're, I don't even think we have the majority of opinion here. So, why don't you all think about that and give it some real thought? If you want to write down what you think and give it to me or talk to me. Personally, we need to either put the issue to bed and say, we're just gonna move forward and not make any changes, or I think if we're going to explore a change, this is the time to do it, we've already brought it up. It's, the timing is correct, and if we were going to do it, it would be now. So, or write pretty quickly.
The process would be, we would establish a study committee by ordinance.
You would approve a motion to establish a study, sorry.
Please, thank you, Taylor.
Approving a motion to establish a study committee to study changing the form of government. So it would be a, you'd approve a motion, adopting a resolution to submit it to the voters once you've finished with the study committee. So, you'd, so the process would be, you guys would put a motion forward, debate the motion, talk about it, whether or not to form the study committee, and then once the study committee comes back, then you have a resolution to put it to the voters, whatever the recommendation is.
Okay.
Can I ask a question too? Because I thought when I was reading the law, the citizenry can also make this happen too.
They could, there's two ways.
There's different ways.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to see if there's organic interest for the citizens to bring it forward to, because that would demonstrate to me, like, this is something people want.
Well, and I think that there's a lot of information that could be put out there, and then they would obviously, any study committee would have public input, quite a bit of it. So why don't we table that until next meeting? Let's put it on the agenda and let's make a motion and take a vote next. Let's try and, hopefully Nolan will be here and we'll have a full council, and we can take an actual vote to see if we want to move forward with that. Okay, the legislative summary and review, Andrew, oh no, Catherine was gonna do that.
Yeah, and this doesn't have to be something very formal, I just thought it would be a good opportunity to see the outcome of some of the bills that we have been following as a group and have that discussion here. And I'd asked Bryson, one of the bills that I had been following was HB three-hundred? Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
And that one would have a direct impact on us because it was expensive, very expensive. It would really have a big impact on his budget, no or little funding coming from the state. So if you wouldn't mind, that was for voting, and so if you don't mind, yeah, whatever, yeah. If you wouldn't mind sharing the outcome of how that stands now.
Yeah, what's the process? Because it's like got a four-year process on it, right?
A lot of caffeine and prayer. We've come to an agreement, I guess the clerks have been working really closely with this. I've felt like I should have had a house in Salt Lake to stay during the session, but the biggest changes right now for HB three-hundred is it's gonna require voters to opt in by mail by twenty-twenty-nine. So nothing's changing immediately, it's all gonna happen in twenty-twenty-nine. It's gonna require voters to write in their last four digits of their ID, so driver's license, but there's also gonna be like a free voter ID if you don't have a driver's license that the state's gonna provide. And then it will change the postmark deadline. So previously, it was if we got our ballot before Election Day, that postmark date, then we would count it. We are now gonna be what's called a ballot in hand. So if the ballot is not into the clerk's office by eight P.M. on Election Day, it won't get counted. So it's gonna speed up results, specifically that one. So no one's gonna be waiting hours or days to figure out what the final results are. And, you know, we're ready for it. We have, we already have the technology as-is to do, check the four last digits, it's just an extra picture we have to take and match it. So, but all this is happening in twenty-twenty-nine. They wanted to do twenty-twenty-eight, and then we said, it's not a presidential year, you're asking for a disaster. So, yeah, so everything's happening in twenty-twenty-nine, and we're gonna make sure everything's ready to go by then.
As far as additional funding, you don't foresee that being?
No, I think the only additional funding, I might be coming, the future, when I say future, like years, we might be sending out a postcard to voters to remind them that they want to opt in to vote by mail, this is how you do it. Other than that.
That'd be kinda costly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Postcards, right now, thirty thousand, but that will happen every eight years, just send that postcard out.
Great, okay, thank you Bryson.
Thanks Bryson.
For helping us with that. HB one-sixty-two, we talked about a lot extensively, and that was the one that was the funding with the sales tax, that we approved, extending that sales tax in October, and how it was going to be limited to just be using for transportation. It was, so if I, it.
It failed in committee.
It failed in committee, so it had went through a few different iterations, but ultimately, it did fail in committee. So we, for now, do not have that restriction on us for the transportation, public safety. So that one is, for now, we're fine with that one. How did the HB two-thirty-six, the career, do you know how the career? County Career Service Council amendment.
I'm pretty sure that failed, didn't it?
That ended up failing ultimately as well? Okay, okay.
The certain rules died.
What?
The certain rules committee died.
Okay, okay. Oh, the transient room tax amendments, do you mind talking about that one?
Four-fifty-four.
Four-fifty-six.
Four-fifty-six.
HB four-fifty-six?
So on that piece of legislation, I know UAC was taking a lot of, a lot of the effort on that, but essentially, I think it amends kind of how the transient room tax can be administered, and essentially, I think it will give more money to the county so that we can better accommodate more visitors, whether that's, you know, accommodating more EMS service funding or things like, of that nature.
Because before, we were limited that that had to go just to tourism, right? To tourism promotion, right?
Yep, and then a certain amount will go to the county, then a certain amount will go to the state. Yeah, there's a way that they've divvied it up, so.
So now it's not just going to tourism promotion, it's going to be, we can, we have flexibility in how we can spend that. The transient room tax, right?
It's a one percent that they added, they added one percent to the TRT, the state did. The state gets fifty percent of that.
Oh.
Twenty-five percent is set aside into a fund where third-through-sixth-class counties can apply to be reimbursed for their EMS costs and their search and rescue costs. The other twenty-five percent was designated to go back to the counties, but they realized they can't make that a direct payment to counties, so they, I think, I believe legislation in the end resolved that so that the county will get the twenty-five percent of that one percent. That's how, that's how that one ended up.
Okay, and then, how did the Beehive Development end?
Taking it to interim.
Yeah, that was SB three-thirty-seven.
SB three-three-seven.
Yeah, Beehive Development Agency.
I think it just got kicked out of the regular session, they're gonna talk about it.
They're gonna continue that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a big.
Is everyone familiar with that one? So that's the one that sets up like a separate, the separate land, it's, yeah.
It's a land use authority.
It's a land use authority outside of counties and municipalities, or outside of counties and cities.
It's a state agency that can govern projects, and they get the, the way it was set up, they were gonna get all of the tax increment funding for either twenty years or even up to forty-five, or forty years, twenty-five years or forty years. And there was a lot of pushback on that, but one of the things that was explained in one of the meetings I was at that helped me understand that a little bit better, there are already, like the Inland Port Authority and the Point of the Mountain Authority, there are already several agencies throughout the state that have that authority that we've given them as a state to take tax increment funding and to do different projects, and they all have their own administration, their own fees. The idea was, let's put it all under one umbrella and have one agency that does those kinds of projects. It just seemed like a really overreach to have that much.
And in addition, it included that they didn't have to get local jurisdiction.
Yes, and that was.
High and in any form.
No approval by any land use, local land use authority.
And I think UAC got them to agree to say they shall use local, they shall involve local authorities rather than they may. And so that was one of their big words.
It was a hard dance because it was the governors really pushing it, and nobody really wanted to cross the governor, and that one.
So I'm sure that'll come back to us next year, but they'll discuss it in interim. Yeah, it was, it was a lot of, well, they brought it out at the last minute, kind of the last week of legislation. And so that was hard.
Yeah, and then the other one, I think, and I think you all received the email from our treasurer Craig McAllister. And that one, if Andrew wants to speak to that one, he's really disappointed, Craig McAllister is really disappointed because that one, the property tax amendments passed, and that affects mostly our veterans and aged population, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't, not that.
Not the veterans, they carved that one out?
Just, yeah.
Okay, so just our.
Circuit breaker stuff.
Circuit breaker.
So it would do away with the state's circuit breaker program on giving tax credits to.
Elderly.
Yes, for our older residents. And so, the way that the bill ended up was, the current users of the program are essentially grandfathered in, whereas no one else will be able to use the program after a certain point, so.
Yeah, and so, I spoke with the treasurer today, and we are still going to try and do a lobby to the governor's office to encourage him to veto that bill. I don't think it'll have any success, but we're going to do it. And the reasoning that I had for, and I spoke about this before, it has stayed pretty steady at about six million dollars a year in cost to the whole state. And they keep, they keep setting aside funds and talking about how concerned they are about homelessness, and, you know, what can we do to resolve the homelessness problem? And to me, six million dollars is a small amount of the overall state budget to keep these older people in their homes, because if they're not able to stay in their homes, then what burden do they have on the rest of the taxpayers? And so that's, if you look at it from that standpoint, from homelessness, it kind of is a small cost for the whole state.
Well, and I feel like also it puts this as, kind of set up as a reverse mortgage for the counties, and I don't feel like that's our role either, to have that role, and anyway.
So we'll, we may try and contact the governor's office to encourage him to veto that bill, just, it's open to the rest of you want to do that. I don't know if any other counties are, I think Craig McAllister said that Iron County and one other county was, their county treasurers were gonna do the same thing, so, we'll see, I think it's worth a try.
Are, all of our local legislators voted in favor of it?
They all voted for it. Yeah.
That wasn't an avenue.
Yeah, no, we spoke to them, I know Craig spoke to them, and, but yeah, we didn't prevail on that.
There's, you know, there's always some trade-offs between legislators and.
Yeah, it was a big one.
Given, give and take, yeah.
It's how politics works.
Yes, absolutely, so we'll do what we can on that one.
Taylor, did you have any other legislation that your office was following that you think that would be beneficial for us to know about the change?
I don't think so, there's a whole list of bills with legislative update. There's a ton of bills targeting prosecutors and, you know, different protections for defense attorneys. One of the things that is new is that we are required to provide more information, track our conviction rates, how much time we are spending on each case, things like that. Originally, it was supposed to force the county attorneys all across the state to track their time in fifteen-minute increments. Thankfully, that was changed, so now it's just this data requirement, so we're gonna be tracking our data more carefully now. But there's, there were dozens of changes to criminal issues this year.
Okay, let us know if there's things that we can do to help lobby anything.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any legislative things?
Kind of back on the one bill we talked about, but HB five-forty-two kind of carried some of that water for SB three-thirty-seven. And I don't know, did anybody follow where that ended? I don't remember where that ended.
I don't know, it's so hard, there's.
Yeah, even this.
Did that one pass?
I'm sorry, sir.
The four-fifty-two?
HB five-forty-two, it passed?
It was one of those late-night last day.
So was SB one-ninety-seven?
Yeah, so it was kind of, for lack of a better way to say it, it was kind of carving out some of the, some points of the SB three-thirty-seven that came out even later than that late.
Taylor, did that bill that was requiring the turnaround time on providing, let's see, information and everything to a case, I mean, the turnaround time was like, they lowered it to so many hours versus.
For a criminal case?
For criminal cases, yeah.
I'm not aware of that, I'd have to, I'd have to look.
Yeah, I know that one, they talked about that one, I can't remember the numbers, but they talked about that one quite frequently in, you know, public safety there, and it was a big one that would have said, hey, the amount of turnaround time is like seventy-two hours to provide all that documentation and all the, and to give the computers back that they've been looking at and all those kind of things, it was crazy.
Yeah, you're talking about when electronics are seized for, to scan it for child sex abuse material, things like that. Yeah, I, I'd have to look at that.
I thought that, I hope that failed.
I seem to remember that didn't make it, but I will, I will take a look.
That was a doozy, that just, there's no way you'd be able to forge the amount of people to have to go through all that information in seventy-two hours. Give it back, you know?
Okay, anybody else have, let's go to council member reports, Mark, will you start us out?
Sure. Just a couple of things to report, one was that I chose to attend the training that Bart provided on the IT and the audio/video for this room, just so I could be aware of what our capabilities are and are not. And I have a better understanding of our system and appreciate what is available to us for modern media. I thought that was good, and Sandy was present as well. Do you want me to talk about today's experience? You want to do that one?
You and Keegan can do that.
Okay, well, I'll kick it off and then add whatever, but today there was a pretty, in my opinion, an incredible event took place today over at our, at our airport with a presentation of a fully-electric aircraft coming in and being presented and available for us to get right up to and take a look at, and then we were able to watch as it took off and just understanding just the effort behind this project that's in association with the state's efforts to be ready with some pretty forward-thinking transportation strategies for the upcoming Olympics in twenty-thirty-four and additional ways to support our transportation needs and help reduce congestion on roads, et cetera. So my additional point on that, I'm excited to see some UDOT dollars spent in Cache County. I look forward to seeing that be something that could come in and help augment our absence of major transportation corridors with freeways, et cetera, in our county, but a significant contribution that we make as taxpayers to UDOT funding, so. And then the other thing I thought I'd report, and I'm excited about, the fact that as of today, due, as reported in the snowtell data for our region, the Bear River watershed area, we're at a hundred-and-seven percent of median snowpack, so we're ahead, so keep praying that we get more. The average median snowpack final day is April fourth, so we're what, twenty, twenty-four days out? So hopefully, we get some additional. So hopefully, we get some additional days like today, where the weather's so nice, and we'll look forward to that. But we also need some snowpack days in between here and, and April. So anyway, just good news for our future water year.
Perfect. Dave?
I don't have anything to report.
Catherine? I don't have anything to report.
Keegan?
Yeah, maybe I'll add that this aircraft is billed as an air taxi that could transport people and especially in areas like ours that are very mountainous and make traversing, especially our east to west, more difficult. That could be some of the potential benefit during the Olympics is shuttle, shuttling people around. Other thing I'll mention is the Open Spaces Board. I attended their meeting. One of the things that came up in their meeting was they were interested in doing some kind of awareness campaign for specifically for those residents that live in The corridors as you enter the valley. They would like to send postcards or
Letters.
Just informing these homeowners and property owners that money is available and that they can apply. I did mention to the board that there may be heartburn on the council that we're We would be spending money to inform someone that free money is available. And one of the questions that came up is, well, if it's, if someone wanted to fund it, like a private citizen, would the council have to appropriate it? I didn't know the answer to that. But there is interest in promoting the program, and maybe even just bringing it up in this meeting promotes it a little bit. But I think there's also maybe PSAs or radio opportunities that we could take advantage of, so that's something I intend to explore.
I think we've talked before about some of us not being comfortable with spending tax dollars to just target specific homeowners. Like a PSA is great if everybody hears the information, but to, to pick and choose people to target is, that's a little more difficult. But, you know, if they have someone else to pay for it, I would have to deal with Taylor to see if that's, like, is that without our, outside of our boundaries, or?
Yeah, I didn't know, so.
Yeah, I don't either. Perfect. Barbara?
I subbed at planning and zoning last Tuesday, no, Thursday, for Nolan. Those people do not get paid enough, let me tell you. That, it was a three-hour meeting. A lot of feelings expressed, some of which were quite adversarial, aimed at the planning and zoning. And I was impressed that one of them spoke up and said, we do not have to listen to that. Because they were trying to place blame on it. And it's, like I said, it was very eye-opening to me. And though I didn't have a, you know, I don't vote on that, they were very open to me being there and expressing my opinion, and I appreciated that, too. So, yes, planning and zoning, thank you for all they do. Just reminding everybody, I didn't see that on here, the UAC registration for the end of April. Andrew and I did have a meeting with Amy Adams. And as some of you might know, there, we no longer have a fleet coordinator, which is okay. And she's been talking to the different departments, and there doesn't seem to be an appetite to replace him or replace that person, because they feel like that they can be functioning with their own person, doing their, and they prefer it that way. She did say, we, we do have three vehicles that are used for checkout purposes, but they are ten years old and they need a lot of work. She says she went and dragged one and the tires were so bad that she, before she got to Canyon, she turned around and came back, because she felt like they were really unsafe. And she says that the risk of an employee getting in an accident due to bad tires can be really costly, plus, you know, what it would, what would happen personally. She, she's talking about possibly looking at renting through enterprise. She feels like that might be the better way to go. Then that way, they take all the responsibility and the insurance costs and different things like that. So she's looking at that, and she does, she's giving us a, a cost information on that. She's going to, she said she will continue to work with the Utah Local Governments Trust to ensure the vehicles report the accidents and process the insurance repairs that they have in the past. And some other things we're going to be discussing in O and P on Friday, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Barbara. I just, the only report I have is that it's been a long few weeks of the legislature going to, participating in policy steering committee meetings, going to UAC meetings, being in the Capitol, contacting legislators. I know that you are all involved, and I think that we need to continue to do that. I think we can make a real difference. And the, the event at the airport today was really interesting. It's so amazing to see. The, the, the vehicles they have right now, the aircraft come in, and there's, it's a two-seater that can move cargo, basically, right now. Their plan is to have air taxis in the future. They even would like to get to the point where they have a vertiport, where they're actually, take off like a helicopter and go straight up. There's a lot going on. There, no one, I believe, Sean, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this was a, they were kind of like a looksee to, to see our facilities. It's not like they have determined they would come here, but that determination is to be made in the future. That was the impression I got, was that they were, it was just a mutual, here's what we're trying to do, and so that everyone could be educated. The thing that I, that I would like all of you guys to be aware of and to do some research, and, because eventually, I would think they might come to the county and ask for a financial investment if they came here. And I don't know how much that would be, or even if that's true. Like, I, I'm just saying that, that it, it sounds like a really great program, a wonderful idea, and I would like to be supportive of that technology. I think Utah is leading the way in the technology, and it could be a really great thing. But we just need to be aware. And am I saying things okay, Sean? You tell me.
Yes, and they would go to the airport authority, doing that it is the agent of the city and county, county
Got it.
But there are state funds. I really don't want to get ahead of
Yeah, I don't either.
Future news elements, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think you were great.
It was, it was really exciting to see it and to be there. So thank you to Keegan and Mark for being there. It was, it was great. And that's all I have to report. So with that, I think if someone would make a motion, we can adjourn.
Second?
Moved in second. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Done for another